Good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to our Hamilton County Board of Commission meeting on July 13, 2023. Want to apologize, we had some technical difficulties, so we're starting a little later, but we are back on track and ready to go. We always start the meeting with prayer, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance, and I just wanted to take a moment for us. There's so much, way too much gun violence, and just losing an eight or nine-year-old innocent little girl from a drive-by shooting. And I just want to, let's pray for our county, and let's pray for the families, for us to be able to pray to stop this gun violence. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I make a motion to approve the minutes of the previous session.
Second?
Commissioner Reese.
Yes.
Commissioner Drehouse.
Yes.
Commissioner Summer Dumas.
Yes. What time are we at? We're running a little bit behind, I'm wondering, should we, do we have anybody here for the public hearing? We do have one person, okay, hold on. We're one minute behind. So I'm going to ask us to go into the public hearing, and then we'll come back with the presentation. In the interest of time, we have a public hearing to consider zone change. Green 2023-02, crosstown medical from C residence to 00, I guess, plant office. And Mr. Aludo, do you want to?
I'm for a meeting later.
All right.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. Ryan Snyder, Development Services Administrator, Hamilton County Planning and Development. This is a zone change request in Green Township. The Ohio Revise Code lays out a process for zone changes in the state of Ohio. The process requires several public hearings that require notifications of neighbors around the property in question. In this case, this is, this is a zone change on North Bend Road in Green Township. Was, okay. Mercy West is right here, so this will be across the street. There is a new Bailey retirement community that's under construction, just adjacent to this site. This is a proposal for so change from C single-family residence to OO planned office that would allow construction of an office development. This is the proposed site plan, because this is a planned district, a plan is required. If approved, only the plan can be built without future public hearings and notifications of neighbors. This is the plan that's proposed as part of this request. There's an office building in the back with parking in the front, landscaping along North Bend Road, one access drive coming out to North Bend Road, and then one access drive proposed off of Edgewood Drive, which is a private drive just to the south of the property. Sorry, here. This is the private road, Edgewood, and this is the access that would come off of that private road. This property, just a couple of pictures, has single-family houses, the last few single-family houses along this stretch of North Bend Road. Obviously, since the opening of the hospital, this has had some pressure for medical office and elder care uses, which occupy most of the properties surrounding this now. This is just a view of the rest of the property, it's partially vacant, partially one single-family house. A proposal of what the building could look like. As part of staff's review and recommendation on this request, the first thing we do is look at what the township has planned for the area. In this case, the township has, Green Township has an adopted land use plan that calls for future all use of this property. The proposed office use is consistent with that plan, so we found that it was consistent. The proposed office use is consistent with that plan, so we found that it was consistent. This site plan was reviewed as well for consistency with the Hamilton County Thoroughfare Plan and the Hamilton County Zoning Resolution. We found no issues with those and recommended approval. The Regional Planning Commission held a public meeting on June 1st and unanimously recommended approval. The Hamilton County Rural Zoning Commission held a notified public hearing on June 15th and also unanimously recommended approval with conditions. So this plan does come before you today with a recommendation of approval from staff, the planning commission, and the zoning commission. We also received a letter from the Green Township trustees in support of the requested zone change. So that is, that is the request, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you very much. I'll open it up. Vice President Drehouse.
Thank you. Thank you, Brian, for the presentation. So I was looking at the conditions that were attached in your report, and I think I just, I'm sure it's in here, I just missed it. Where is there a reference to the stormwater plan related to the development?
The stormwater is, will be handled by the Stormwater and Infrastructure Division. They'll require the stormwater detention design to be reviewed and approved as part of the building permit process if the zone change is approved and the building goes forward to permitting. Unless there are any special conditions on the property that the Stormwater and Infrastructure Division makes us aware of ahead of time, we allow the project to go to them for compliance with their requirements as, after the process is over, after the zoning process is over.
Okay, and the reason I'm asking is because we, as a board, have been looking at impervious surfaces and trying to reduce the impact of impervious surfaces, and I suspect, well, I know we're building one here, and so I just want to make sure that that impervious surface isn't going to cause more stormwater to go into an already full system and large weather events, and so I just, I think we have a renewed sensitivity to this kind of thing. So maybe as that moves forward, if, who is that, Todd Long, is it?
It's Mohammed Islam.
Okay.
With Stormwater and Infrastructure.
Okay, I'm just, I'll reach out to his office. Okay, and so, as you said, and I just want to reiterate, this went to the Rural Zoning Planning Commission, it went to Green Township trustees, they all unanimously supported the project. Were, at the public hearings, was there any community opposition?
No, there have been, there have been no residents in attendance at any of the public meetings that we've held so far, there's not a lot of people living around this property. The one issue that was consistently raised, there is, there's a private easement issue between the Bailey project to the north and this project as far as access to Edgewood Drive, but the applicant states that he has access, legal access, the neighbor says that he doesn't, it's a private easement issue that'll have to get worked out between those two private property owners. They do have access to the site from North Bend Road, which is a county road, so either way it goes, they'll still have access to their site, and that'll just have to be handled in court by the property owners.
Okay, and I have one last question. Could you bring up the map again of the plan? Because I have an access question. So the access that is, uh-oh. I feel like we're back where we started. There it is. Let's go to the next one. So the access then from North Bend, and I'm, my sister lives really close to this property, so I'm familiar with this road, is there, am I looking at a left turn lane as you approach this, or, I can't, I can't tell what that is?
There is not, there is a median in the middle of North Bend Road at this port, at this part of the road. So if they don't get access to Edgewood, it would be right in, right out. You would be able to turn right in off of North Bend Road only, and when you came out, you would have to turn right onto North Bend Road.
Right, so you can't go down North Bend, I guess, going to the north and take a left into that, right?
I'm sorry.
You can't, traveling north on North Bend, turn left into this location, you would have to go?
That is correct. It is a limited access driveway onto North Bend, the way it is currently designed because of the median. It's a right in, right out, right now because of the center median line.
So?
The full access movement is at Edgewood, the way they're showing it.
All right, so?
It's a traffic study, we, the engineer's office reviewed and approved.
Yeah, because if they don't get access to that, and I know they say they, they have the right to that, if that becomes problematic?
It changes the whole layout.
You're going to have a lot of U-turning going on, on North Bend Road.
Yes, and we will re-review that, if that's the case. The traffic study we looked at showed the two access points with the one being at Edgewood.
All right, so if they, if this becomes an issue and it's tied up in court, you will then review a new plan without that access?
That's correct.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Dumas.
Thank you, Madam Chair. How many public meetings have you had?
There was, there's an initial public meeting that we hold before you're allowed to apply for a zone change in the township, so we had that meeting before the process began. We had, the Regional Planning Commission is not a notified public hearing, but it is a public meeting, and the zoning commission is a notified public hearing, so counting this one, there have been four. The trustees also had a public meeting, so probably five.
I mean, that include the residents?
All the residents were notified, anybody?
They get a note, the notification of each meeting, okay, that's what I wanted to know. And you were seeing the Regional Zoning Committee, there was unanimous decision, but I noticed, I noticed on your quick slide, there was a six zero one, so was that one person abstained?
There was, one member had a conflict of interest, I believe, in abstains. Actually, I think that's actually wrong, the slide may be wrong. The documents that I gave you indicate a six oh vote from the planning commission and a five oh vote from the zoning commission.
So you can, you show that, please? Yeah. I think it was the first map, Christie. Yeah, that one, yeah. So the, yeah, the five, zero, and one.
Yeah, no, that's an error, it was five zero.
Oh, okay.
The next case is coming through in a couple of weeks, actually had the five oh one vote, which I guess is where that came from.
Okay, all right, thank you. That's all I have.
Oh, yeah?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, is anyone here to speak on, I don't have any cards, anyone on Zoom to speak on public hearing? No one?
Oh, what? Who's card?
Did you fill out a card to speak on, I don't have a card, are you here to speak on the?
Oh, I'm a developer. I'm sorry, I didn't fill out a card.
Okay, you want to come up, and then we have to get a card from you. Come up and say your name if you want to say something.
Okay, sure.
You have two minutes.
Greetings.
Greetings.
I'm Chuck Squeri, the president of Crosstown Living Group with this development. In regard to what you're talking about, Edgewood Road is, it's a very interesting road, I was involved in the original development of it, all the way back 25 years ago, when we first put a church back there. We, there was a lawyer that designed all the property that, that became, that was onto Edgewood Road, that he put on all the, all the deeds of all the property owners, and in fact, it's on deed of this property that Bailey Place has, that they would dedicate 25 feet, convey it, to the dedication of a widening of the road of any, on any public agency. So Edgewood Drive is, I mean, it's, you know, we're here, I think we're all here to look forward, you know what I mean? I think that's what the commissioners are doing, they're constantly looking forward in developments. Edgewood Road is a, it's becoming a, really, in all of Green Township, there is not another road that's going to have this much traffic that's private. So there is, there's the church back there, there's Bailey Place, there's our development, there's a rack business, and then Green Township is an owner also that wants to develop back there, and they have a grand plan for connecting all these roads. There is in the Ohio Revised Code, Section 5553, there's rulings and methods of dedicating a private road, and we're in the process of that, to just kind of go forward even further with Green Township's grand plan around the two lights, with the dedication of Edgewood Road, to make a future better for all parties. And I began this process 25 years ago, when we located the church back there, and I've overlooked all the developments, in fact, I've done some of the developments. So yeah, I am looking for, I just wanted to tell you, there is a plan to look forward, and we will submit that. In fact, the commissioners are the ones that rule on the dedication of a private road, from what I read on the Ohio Revised Code. So I just wanted to let you know that.
Yeah, we're aware, thank you.
Okay.
You want to fill out a form, a card, so that we know that you spoke?
Okay.
No other comments? There's no further comments? I make a motion to close the public hearing? Are you for the public hearing or another item? I had another.
Another item.
Okay, we're closing the public hearing. Close the public hearing.
Second. Commissioner Reese.
Yes.
Commissioner Drehouse.
Yes.
Commissioner Summer Dumas.
Yes.
I'll prepare a resolution for you next meeting in two weeks, to that effect.
Okay, thank you very much, thank you. On here, we do have a presentation, but I will, we only have one public comment, so I would allow, or Jessica Scully, come forward. I think we have a, one second, we're gonna, I think we have a, okay, one second, I think we have a cordless microphone that we're bringing to you. Can we, go ahead, can we move the microphone? Apologize, I thought we had a cord. Can you, can that, does that move? I thought we could. Does that come off, Bridgette?
Yeah, I need to, I'm sorry, I won't be able to.
Apologize for that.
I won't be able to.
I'm sorry.
That would be loud.
You have anything else?
Yeah, we can hear you.
Yeah, we can hear. We can hear you, though.
I'm really loud, I can be loud. My name is Jessica Scully, I have been receiving DDS services through Hamilton County for 15 years, recently I have been having issues. Number one, obtaining a higher lip sling that the doctors and physical therapists recommended, waiting since March, and paperwork isn't, still isn't done. Number two, my caregivers have had hardship getting paid on time, February and June, and aside, they've been to go over eight weeks to get paid. I have caregivers who the primary income is taking care of me, and if they're not getting paid, there'd be a problem. Number three, an agency committed serious Medicaid fraud for two and a half years, using Medicaid money. I repeatedly told DDS, my SSA, whoever else is DDS, and the fraud continued, and they paid the invoices. They knew the fraud was happening, but yet they paid the invoices that were submitted and paid for. Number four, DDS should be audited to see where the money is truly going. Where is the tax levy, Medicaid money going? Why does it take so long to get things done? This affects my health and safety. I've had, I've been left alone, unattended, three nights in a row in the past, and the county didn't do anything. My health and safety, and I live alone. I have a progressive bone disease, and they don't care. My one SSA waited almost a year to see me, how can she advocate for me if she doesn't know what I look like? Doesn't know what my needs are. It's the most vulnerable in the community, and we're treated like third-class citizens. Majority of people get DDS services are non-verbal. They should have iPads, they don't. They should have technology, they don't. If I want anything, I have to wait. I lost my primary care doctor because of, they got sick and tired of writing prescriptions for a wheelchair, and it scares me the hell, because after 45 days, Medicaid rolls, the prescription is in doubt, and I did that for over a year, that the county wouldn't do the paperwork to make sure I'd get a chair. I have a wheelchair in my home that I haven't been able to use with Medicaid and Medicare money, because of the way my legs shift, because they don't do paperwork for the Easlight bracket to be installed in a chair. I've had broken bones due to the neglect of what they're doing. It has to stop. I want to help you guys, so it doesn't happen to anybody else. I'm not here to complain to you guys, I am here to say, I don't want it to happen to anybody else, and it's happened to me. Most of my parents are gone, I have, like, fighting for it. So it's misuse of Medicaid money, and for me to know what goes on, and the county did nothing about it, and they let, they let it happen for two and a half years, over $100,000 of Medicaid money was stolen out of my waiver. So it's upsetting to me. I have to live like this, and knowing what I know, shouldn't happen. I worked at UC for 18 years, the controller's office is an accountant, so I know what to do to ask questions, and there's no accountability for what they do. It's the simple things they don't ask questions. It's upsetting to me.
Thank you for coming forward today.
And I want to help, I'm not bad, I do, I just want to help.
I got you.
Yeah.
Thank you. I would ask, Mr. Aludo, I know our Director of Jobs and Family Services is here, if someone can work with her on this?
Yeah, happy to follow up, and I'll work with Michael for a response and outreach to DDS as well.
Just responsible, the money isn't going.
Yeah.
I realize the year is July to June, and the state year, so where's the money going? I've been waiting for a sling since March, that's March, April, May, June, July, still haven't, but yet they somewhat, let someone commit Medicaid for, for two and a half years, filling for hours, they were not at my home, saying that I was up all night long, so the awake hours are $27 an hour, so they could pay the awake hours. No one asked me. So it's upsetting to me, I have to live like this. I'm educated, and I have to live like this, and when all the money is gone, I have, I need caregivers to take care of me, and I have to live like this. It's not right, my rights are being violated, it's not right.
We appreciate.
Just going to tell you for people that don't have a voice like I do, thank you.
We appreciate you coming here, and we don't want you or anyone else living like that. Mr. Aludo says, have someone to follow up, do we have?
Thank you.
Have someone get your information and follow up with you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have a presentation update on the Inspire Youth Initiative, Director Robert Bell of the Office of Economic Inclusion and Equity, if you would come forward. Commissioner Dumas, did you want to say something as they are coming forward first?
It's a little hard after, after that comment, but thank you, Madam Chair. And the main reason for Inspire Initiative was to make sure that those young people that are out there, and they have older people that are leading them and guiding them, to be able, not to have to scrape the bucket to try to help these young children to be positive, and we talk about, you know, we've, we had the Resiliency Grants, which was great, but we talk about the Boys and Girls Club and the YWCA, and those are all great, but the people that are out in the community that we're trying to reach with Inspire are like moms and dads to these young people, they're role models to these young people, and it's a, it's a major difference than the organized agency, so I'm going to let it, I'm going to leave it to you, the both of you, and then I'll probably have a final comment.
Thank you, Commissioners, and thank you for your leadership and vision on this as well, and I'm going to start it out with, with three words, full court press. The reason is, is that's what Inspire for Youth Initiative is doing, because it's now being paired with two other initiatives that Hamilton County has done, the Resiliency Initiative with nonprofits, that Holly Christman and Sarah Adams, you know, and her team started, and it's also with the Hamilton County Family Services Beyond Your Imagination Initiative, and now, now Inspire, Inspire Youth Initiative is along with it. But what makes Inspire Initiative a little different is that we're working with, as Commissioner said, grassroots people and small nonprofits in the community, and to my knowledge, Hamilton County has not had a strong relationship with those grassroots groups, but now, but now that's changing, and we want to, and we're going to be able to do that. So one of the things that Equity Framework tells us is that we must strive to be fair and provide opportunities for all, including our youth, and that we must meet them where they are. Not only location and neighborhood, and 51300 plus is one of our best examples in doing that, but also meet them where they are in their personal life. This is what grassroots people are good at, they live at these, with these kids all year round, they know them, and they can relate to them. But working with these groups is not going to be as easy as working can relate to them. But working with these groups is not gonna be as easy as working with large, more sophisticated agencies, as Commissioner talked about. We're finding that it takes, you know, we're finding that out, too, and it takes more handholding, more monitoring, and more support. But it, I mean, but with the news that we got just the other day, it's worth it to effectively serve as many of these high-risk youths as we can. I think, and that's why I'm saying the three words are full court press. And Hamilton County is serious, is serious about that. So, let me tell you how we're gonna do some of that. We're gonna provide grants of $5,000 and more to community-based organizations, sports groups, as Commissioner said, a whole range of, of really as close to the community groups as we can. We've got 50, oh, I'm sorry, hit something. Target, we target these groups and, because they have an advantage that sometimes we don't have, that, that they're really on the ground with the needs of the community. We're gonna support creative and effective methods that empower and, and that, that empower youth to learn, grow, and inspire to achieve. We're gonna cover the cost of purchases and supplies. We're not gonna give them money directly, but we're gonna cover those costs on equipment and sports and social clubs, educational training, and much, much more. And we're gonna fund enrichment activities such as cultural outings and the, and the rest. And again, we've got, this is the third program we have really addressing those needs, and that's why I'm calling it a, a, a full court press. To date, we have 132 requests for assistance, 50 requests reviewed, purchases for 47 requests are currently being processed, and it just moves on. And we're gonna have over 5,200 youth served in this first round by, by funding these things. And we're working to contract with ABC, activities beyond the classroom, in order to help us do that. And they're doing a similar thing with Beyond Your Imagination, and it's really gonna speed up our process and make this an even more effective program. So, I'm gonna turn it over to Alice to talk a little bit about what it is we're gonna support.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. I'm Alice, and I'm the Program Coordinator of the Inspire Youth Initiative. This is exciting to me because of the variety of organizations that's being served. We're helping bands, dance teams, mentor programs, leadership programs, media, educational, college prep tutoring, sports like boxing, football, soccer, and squash ball. I don't even know a lot about it, but I know it can help some others. And then even CPR training. Some of the items that we're covering is marching band equipment, instruments, dance equipment, trips to museums, the museum center, the Freedom Center, CPR training equipment, STEM education supplies, boxing supplies, uniforms and equipment, mental health development material, media equipment, college prep testing supplies, arts and crafts materials, exercise equipment, computer building material, music training and teaching, athletic training equipment, football and cheerleading uniforms, and stress management, and that's just a few of the items. So, it's just exciting, especially with the things that we see going on in the county, that these organizations would have funding to help them help improve the children, our youth.
And then we'll just show you on our website, we're gonna put up a, a map of where the, where the communities that we're being served are located. It's a map you'll be able, why do I keep doing that? You'll be able to go onto the map and get more information, and we're gonna continue to improve this and add additional information as we go around the services. But not only that, the monitoring of them, the impact, and also to provide continual support to these organizations. We're finding a lot of stuff that we never even knew about with these requests, and I'm just amazed on how much stuff is going out there. I mean, we've got four boxing clubs that we never even knew about. I mean, it's amazing. Football teams that were having to put players in and, and wear the same cleats, take one out to put his cleats on and then go back in with, with the other. So, we gotta, we have, we have the opportunity, we have the resources to really make a difference. And it's equity, it's equity when we're establishing more contacts with the community and reaching out to big, to more and more organizations that have the same goal as we do. We need to save our children. We've gotta figure out how to do that. And so, I commend you for, the Commissioners and, and, and our administration for your vision and for your leadership in this. And I think we're onto something here. So, I really ask for your support. Thank you. Any questions?
Well, first of all, thank you for the presentation, and I'm going to start with Vice President Drehouse.
Thank you. I really, I don't have, oh, I have one question, and I do wanna give a nod to Commissioner Summer Dumas for her inspired idea about Inspire and bringing this forward as part of a collection of things, as you say, that we're trying to do to make sure that the youth in this county are being served through some of the tax dollars and the levy dollars. So, is this, is the funding through this, you mentioned that it's, is it going directly to the nonprofits as we did similar to the ARPA dollars? It's not. So, could you help me better understand then where it is going?
Well, it's going through, well, we are, we're right now, we're, it's us, and we're paying it and taking it to our purchasing and procurement processes, picking up stuff that they need. So, what we'll do, we get all the information from them, and that's a task, you know, and that takes a time to get all the information, find out who, who the providers are, figure out what kind of procurement method we have to take, depending on the amount of money and that kind of thing, and then make, make sure we arrange for the payment to the vendor and also the delivery to the organization. That's how we're doing it. Now, with ABC, actually beyond the classroom, they don't have all of that. Then, we don't have to go through our procurement process. We, they'll do it, and we reimburse them. And that's what they're doing for Michael, you know, Michael Patton's group, Beyond Your Imagination, and we're, we're finalizing the contract with them to do it for us. That way, we'll roll out this thing a whole lot quicker, more, more effectively. And, and the key that I want, that I want them to remember is we're just not gonna give them money and walk away. These groups really need to stay connected with us. We're gonna figure out ways to provide, continually provide support, 'cause like we got, what, 132 that are doing some things that I'm, I'm amazed at, that we, and we wanna, we wanna continue to make that contact with Hamilton County and, and increase our reach in the community. I think that does nothing, that is better for all of us, for Hamilton County and for our residents.
Yeah, great. Thank you. I'll, I'll look forward to the results of this and, and who all's applied and what all the, the group is going to get through this. Yeah, I just wasn't clear on how the funding was rolling out, but you've clarified it. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Dumas.
Madam Chair.
I know you're extremely proud, so I'm gonna let you, you go next, and I, I just wanna say this, though. At a time when we're focusing a lot on the negative of young people, and there is some egregious negative things that are happening, but the majority of young people are doing positive, and we have to be just as vigilant to provide the resources, the opportunities. We have to, as I always say, get our program to the young people before the street program gets a hold of them. And so, this Inspire allows us to do that. And so, I do want to commend Commissioner Dumas for this, and I want to commend you all for making this move quickly. We have a tendency not to move as quick, but the administration has moved very quickly in a time with a high need right now. We don't want parents not to be able to afford it. Idle time and idle mind is not good for anyone. So, I'll turn it over to you, Commissioner Dumas.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and also Vice President Drehouse. You guys have, have said it all. When this was introduced to the board, they immediately grabbed it, and it's obvious that the need is there. As a board, we allocated $250,000. And as was said earlier, we're gonna need at least two more rounds of this to meet the needs of the ones who have been approved. And I plan on adding, as we look at our budget, go through our budget for 2024, to make this a line item. Because when you think about it, we're serving over, I think it was 5,020 young people we want to serve. With $250,000, that's like $50 apiece for each child. And I mean, they're a great investment. They are our future, and we need to do more of this. So, we will be coming forward. I'm sure you guys will, and for the Commission to take a, a look at that resolution to be able to fund those other entities. But just really excited about how far you guys have come. That includes ladies when I say guys. But I'm just, and then that list that you, you sent to all of us, the list of about, what was it, 47 groups, if you can, if Bridgette can post that somewhere, so the public can see. It's just astounding the numbers of groups and the diversity of groups, not only where they're located, but the, like you were saying, there are four boxing teams, and, but it was, the group was just so diverse. And so, I thank you all. And the ABC, just for more information, they have been a vendor with Hamilton County for many years. So, it's not like we're getting anybody new, and they just happened to come for another meeting. I thought, oh, they might be good. And I talked to Robert and Alice about it, and it seems, it sounds like it's working out. So, that's great. Thank you so much.
And I just would like to thank Alice, you know, who came in new and hit the ground running with this, Gabrielle Whaler, who's been really contributing to the stuff, especially a lot of the technical stuff we have to do.
Great.
Sarah Adams, and Holly Christman, and also Michael Patton and his team.
Oh, my goodness.
Giving us some insight on the best way to get this thing going and up. And we're, we're just really excited about it. I think, I think we've really hit on to something. And I'm telling you, the things we're finding out that's going on in the community, we need to know. We need to know these things. So, thank you very much.
And Madam Chair, you were saying about, we all always see the negative news, and this is a good news story.
Warp and go.
He's sleeping.
Okay.
He's asleep.
And it needs to, it needs to be told, you know, like you were saying, so.
Yeah. Spend more time on the positive, and people say, well, I need to be positive, because that's what's getting all the attention.
Absolutely.
Thank you both for that. Thank you for the, for the update, and really positive. Okay, we already did public comments. Now, we'll go to the Commission comments. Vice President Drehouse.
Thank you. I have a couple of things today. I too was gonna acknowledge some of the violence that's happening in the city. We've had three drive-by shootings in the past week of young people. It's just, it's astounding, it's shocking, and, and I too just wanted to note that and offer condolences to those families. And we'll work in any collaborative way that we can with the City of Cincinnati to try to address some of the issues that are going on in the streets. And I do think, I'm a big believer of prevention, and so I think that some of what we've just talked about offer preventive ways to avoid some of the shooting and some of the violence that's happening in the streets. So, it is a different approach, but I think it is an appropriate approach. I wanted to just highlight a couple of things that happened in the last couple of weeks. The Alloy had their 40th anniversary party. I, I don't, can't remember if we talked about this or not, but it was, it was a lot of fun. They had a lot of grads from their incubator out at a celebration with food trucks, beer, and unfortunately rain. But people came, and they had fun, and it was really neat to listen to the stories of the entrepreneurs who have moved out of the incubator and now are, and standalone businesses and contributing to the economy, you know, the county. So, hats off to Alloy for recognizing all of them and allowing all of us to hear the, the really great stories. We also had the Drug Court event out in front of the building, the first time that Judge Sanders has done that. She was out there making sure all was going well. And at the same time, we had the One Stop set up over at the Justice Center with the 513 relief bus. So, there was quite a bit going on outside the building that day, and there were a lot of people moving around, getting assistance for a variety of needs that they have. So, I was glad to see that that work continues, and it was a really, again, really well-attended event. The other thing is that Election Day is coming up, and early voting has started. It's, we kicked it off a couple of days ago. While the Election Day is August 8th, people can go to the Board of Elections and early vote. So, I just want to bring that to people's attention. A lot of times, in an election like this, there's not a lot of information out there to alert people to the fact that we're in a voting cycle. We've got issue one on the ballot. We are not in the business to tell them folks how to vote. We just want them to vote. So, please go to the Board of Elections website. They've got, I've got the hours in front of me, but they're way too long for me to list out. But it's fair to say that they're open a lot during the week, especially 8 to 5, and then on some weekends. So, please visit their website, and please exercise your right and privilege to vote. And then I was going to also note the public hearing. Madam President, I'm sure you'll talk about this, but we've got a public hearing related to the zoo at 6:30 tonight out in Woodlawn to take public comment about the levy and how we, how the public would like us see, to have us approach that levy for the ballot. So, I just wanted to remind people that that's happening. That's all I've got. Thank you.
Awesome. Commissioner Dumas?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just a few things. I did have a meeting with the Sheriff Department as it relates to real-time crime, their presentation, and what they can do to eliminate some of this crime in this, in our region, and the tools that they will be using to make that happen. And they wanted to introduce that to me, and I think they have already talked to the other Commissioners. And it's nothing that, as a county, that we have to prove for funding their grants that are taking place, that they're putting in for. And I was really excited about the new techniques they're looking at. Not so new, but we're gonna integrate that with the City of Cincinnati if we can also. And yesterday, I attended the ribbon cutting at the Korean BBQ Chicken Restaurant on 150 West Fourth Street. This is a national restaurant, and they were looking around to see where they should come, and they chose this area. So, just really excited about representing the Commissioners at that event yesterday. Just wanted to say a couple other things. Let's see. I want to thank publicly Jim Foliano, who saw Beyond Your Imagination, the other initiative that we have started, and went great. But he has an organization called Tickets to Hope. I think it's Ticket to Hope. And so, he looks around for any organizations that he thinks are doing great things, and he saw Beyond Your Imagination. And he donated 500 Reds tickets for our foster children, and so they will be attending a game, and the Reds are doing pretty good right now. So, I just wanna publicly thank him for that effort, and we are finding that a lot of our partners and community people are wanting to be a part of that Beyond Your Imagination. So, we thank you all. I just had one other, somewhat editorial. I have been getting emails and phone calls about what we're doing as it relates to rental and utilities. And as we know, the 513 bus has served thousands of people. And so, I was asking Jeff about, there's a gap somewhere, in my opinion, because the people that I've talked to, the people that have contacted me are saying, when they fill out their application, things have been approved, now there's a 90-day wait for rental or utilities. And my concern is, why is there a 90-day wait if you have everything that you need? And I don't see the county as, I don't see us as holding it up. I don't see the bus holding it up. I really don't see JFS holding it up. So, I'm not pointing fingers. But I asked Jeff if he could give me a flow chart to look at, where is it stopping at? I know once JFS gets it, they have to send it to the auditor, and the auditor has a review, make sure we have enough money. But this 90-day wait is deplorable. And whatever we need to do, I even said I'd take a leave of absence, and yeah, I'm gonna save the day, you know. But if I can just find out what's going on, that we can move this money quicker. And we do have a new treasurer down, Bridget Kelly is down there, a new auditor, I should say. And so, she's down there, and I'm wondering, I know Jeff, you'll be getting back with me on that flow chart, but like, where does it, where does it stop? I mean, where are we having the stopgap? And so, we know the landlords are not gonna wait 90 days for their money. We know that. And we know, I just, the people I've talked to, I just do not want to see them on the street if we can help it. And so, that's my plea, that we try to speed up the process. We're doing, when I say we, the bus and the JFS is doing, in my opinion, what they can do. But where is it stopping? So, I just needed to say that because I think about it at night. It's hard to sleep, that I'm in a comfortable bed, and so other people are just on pins and needles. One gentleman I talked to, he was just praying that the landlord would hold off the sheriff before he was evicted. He fortunately did not get evicted, but by the time the money gets there, the fees for being late takes up some of the rent. So, I'm, I'm not gonna go on and on about it, but it's an area that we need to figure out how we can make things a little different. And, and I'm hoping we can do that. So, and that's, I just wanted to say one other thing about Inspire. And that's, I just wanted to say one other thing about Inspire. I just thank you guys for, we've said enough about it, but just moving it forward. I didn't want, my nightmare was that the summer would be over and we would not start to put this money out. But, but we're doing it and I'm so happy that we are. So that's all I have. Thanks.
Thank you. And let me say that I think all of us getting a copy of the flow chart would be important and maybe one of our meetings come forward. But this is a state of emergency. I know Director Pat is here now, but we do need to get this money out the door to help the people. And so we do need to know what's the bottleneck, what's the, what's the issue? And I know there was some about, well, you know, is the money going to be accounted for? Do we stop and wait? And we did that last time and then at the last second. Now we got 30 days to get the money out the door or we're going to lose it. So we do have to do that. We had been doing, I saw a much better job, but we've got to keep our eye on the ball because the landlords are not waiting. There is, there is no assistance in terms of the courts and those kind of things. So people can be turned off immediately. And so we do need some immediate help. And then to others that are coming, you can't really come to the bus and you need the money in 14 days. You've got to come a little earlier because it's not like, or not just the bus, but you call JFS, it's not like you fill out the application and the money come tomorrow. So we need to do a better job also educating people as well. But I totally agree with you, Commissioner Dumas, on that. I got a couple of things that, that I have. Glad you mentioned Korean chicken. I, I went there before they had their grand opening and the chicken is amazing. It is amazing. I might have to stay away from it too much, but it's really, really good. So hopefully people will get a chance to stop by. As Vice President Dreehouse mentioned, we do have a public hearing, a very important, very important public hearing this evening. And it's regarding the zoo levy. And it is in Woodlawn and it's at six o'clock so people can, 6:30. Yeah, so people can actually get off at six and be there by 6:30. It's at 6:30 this evening, so we hope to see, hope to see everyone there. Couple of things that, also I was represented by my Chief of Staff, Veda Stevens, at the Blink press conference. I'm excited to know that Blink will be back in 2024 and it was awesome. And so we're excited for it to come back and had a lot of economic impact as well. This week, we are today, I believe, nine days away from the historic grand opening of the Cincinnati Black Music Walk of Fame. And I want to thank my colleagues for voting for this project to move forward. And it has been a lot of labor of love because we haven't had anything like this before. It provides an equity and an inclusion project on the banks at a time when on the banks we don't have one African-American-owned business. Many people have told me, wow, this is amazing. We're so excited that this will be state-of-the-art, interactive, and it will be free. A lot of times we build things, there's still a fee to get in. We build stadiums, you got to pay to get in it. And we're very excited that this will be free and open to families. This year, we will be inducting Felipe Wynn of The Spinners, James Brown, who did a lot of recording here in Cincinnati and really that's how Bootsy was discovered and so many others. Louise Shropshire, who is the original writer of the original version of We Shall Overcome, civil rights song, and The Deal with the original, all of the original members, including L.A. Reid and Babyface. The inductees of the past, because we were not open, we've had three other inductions, two other induction ceremonies. They will be coming back to see their, see the opening. So Midnight Star will be back, Penny Ford will be back, Bootsy Collins will be back, Otis Williams will be back. And they will be back to, to see the opening. I want to say that this could not have been done without a public and private partnership. Procter &amp; Gamble signed up for three years and then signed up for another three years that just came in. So each of you should have it sponsoring the Stars. So the Stars themselves are privately funded. They've also privately funded and helped with marketing so that we have a professional marketing that will go out to encourage and let people know that this event is happening and it's free and they can attend. So it's been a lot of private partnerships to help with those extra things, with marketing and advertising. And then in-kind partners that we've had in public-private partnerships, sorta in-kind. And yesterday in the library, they hosted an event for the other and other people who will be in the influencer section. So there's a section with over 60 people from Hamilton County, southwest Ohio, who will be recognized in the Walk of Fame, who have not received recognition in their hometown, their home areas. And so they're very excited. The oldest one is Frank Payne Jr., who is 101 years old, played with Duke Ellington and never received permanent recognition. The Walk of Fame, as I've indicated, is a half an acre on the banks out of 198 acres. So it's just a very small piece, but an important piece of the puzzle across the street from the NFL Paycor Stadium that's owned also by the county and down the street from the Major League Baseball Red Stadium that's down from the county. And so very excited. We've gotten national news and attention. We brought tourism folks to town and it takes place during the Cincinnati Music Festival, which brings in about $107 million in economic impact each year. And they've been around for 50 years. And inside of the Walk of Fame, they, there will be the story of the music festival. You'll be able to see that. Of course, with interactive and all that, let me say I want to give a special thanks to all those who are still working. We are still working. We're nine days out, we're still working to get this completed and ready to go, all the construction workers, the technology people and the community. Last year, we had about over 3,000 people that attended this event. We're expecting a really nice-sized crowd this year. And then the Ohio Players will perform, be performing free of charge. And so the goal was through the private folks to help us get the word out so that everyone in Hamilton County has been invited and can participate. I see this as a positive project. And let me be clear, when we do things that are different, sometimes people try to find something and make something up because they want it to be negative. It wasn't negative when there was not one black-owned business on the banks. There was no story. There was no looking into it. And so now we have a half a acre because this board has said, we're going to be about equity, we're going to be about inclusion, and we're going to be about doing some things different. And we're going to have a tourism attraction that's going to be free for grandma and the grandkids to come out and enjoy. And so I'm excited. It's nine days and I'm putting my time into hopefully making sure that this is an incredible thing for everyone and it takes a lot of work. And I do, and on July 22nd will be when I say the rest of what I need to say. But I wanted to say that this has been a public and private partnership. And I want to thank many who have been involved with in-kind as well as support, Procter &amp; Gamble leading the way, leading the way, among others, Krogers, et cetera, to make sure this is top-notch. I want to thank the library. Yesterday was a huge crowd. Lincoln Ware was there broadcasting live and they said, wow, we had to see this, this many people, this type of thing while they're in construction, come to the library and inside the library. And it was awesome. And many of these stories will, as you go to the Walk of Fame, you get the, like the snapshot, but you'll be able to go to the library and get the rest of it. You'll learn more and more about these different inductees and people who are involved. The Convention Visitors Bill, they do what they do. They're bringing it, they're getting people to come for that entire weekend. Music Festival, all of the different activities, the Black Taste, the Festival 513. It's a number of things happening, including the Cincinnati Black Music Walk of Fame. So it'll be a music quarter. It starts at 12:00 noon. And P.N. Everson Price and All-Star Band will be performing at the beginning. We're asking everybody, we're white, just as unity, we're something white, not to have everything white, but something white. And we're going to have a time capsule. So my colleagues will have something to put in a time capsule to be open in 30 years. It won't be able to be open to 30 years and we'll leave something for the next generation. And I think that was really cool. And that idea came from one of the construction workers on the site. It just goes to show you that they don't see themselves as construction workers, they look at family. We're doing this, doing this together. So wanted to let people know, that's the time, that's the date and the location. We're at the Andrew Brady Music Center. We start off inside and then we end up outside. Now with that, in the Cincinnati Black Music Walk of Fame, Beyonce's name is mentioned because one of the music influencers was, is honored in there because this young man helped produce her Renaissance album, which is her album that's out now. And so he's recognized in there as helping to produce Beyonce by name Renaissance album. And I was having a conversation because I'm very excited about what Taylor Swift did. Taylor Swift is what I had been talking about to the administration about as we go into this next bingo lease, how we need to get more activities in our stadiums when we're not playing games. And that we needed a third party to be able to help attract more events. That's a major piece of what I want to see going forward because I think we're leaving a lot of money on the table. Well, then Taylor Swift comes and shows that this is what can happen. Everyone's not going to be Taylor Swift, 92 million or 94 million impact, but wow, if we had 40 million or 30 million ongoing, it can be amazing. And Taylor Swift showed that this county can do it. Everybody chipped in, everybody came together, restaurants, hotels, it was major. So then we heard that Beyonce had to cancel her appearance in Pittsburgh. Because I kept saying, why do we have Beyonce? We need Beyonce too. And so I, I was talking to Amanda in Communications, because Amanda keeps up with this, you know, she's on at Swifties and the Beehive. And I said, man, we should bring, try to go after Beyonce because Pittsburgh is a drivable market. And this is the one time, we want Pittsburgh to come here, not, not for the football game. We want them to come for this. But I reached out to the administrator and I said, listen, this is what we were talking about. Let's go after that date for Beyonce. Both stadiums are available. Beyonce was here for On the Run, her and Jay-Z. I was at that concert. Let's go after it. It, and let's tell the story. Beyonce, you're in the Black Music Walk of Fame, you have your producer that's from Cincinnati, we're right across the street. Wow, this could be amazing. And so I asked administrator to reach out to those over at Paycor and Major League Baseball over at Great American, and let's try it. What do we got to lose? And so I wanted to ask the administrator if we have any updates, where we are. And I know the Beehive is getting, getting buzzed up and ready to go, but this could be a place that they could possibly honor the, the tickets of Pittsburgh and get new tickets. I mean, this could really be a win if we could possibly put it together and we have nothing to lose if it couldn't happen. Because we don't have anything booked then and we don't have any money coming in on that day. So Mr. Ludo, can you give us an update?
Just a quick, first of all, one quick correction to one of your comments, Commissioner. We don't mind Pittsburgh. That's, that's a W on the agenda, on the, on the.
Well, that is, that is a W. Yeah, yeah. Yeah, they can, they can come. They try to take up all our seats and I don't like it.
But no, we are looking into it. We are, we have reached out to the, the parties that we work with and we're, we're definitely looking into it to see if there is the opportunity to pull that show that was for Pittsburgh into Cincinnati. No answer for you yet at this point, but we are, we are reaching out and we'll get back to you as soon as we know something solid on it.
Okay, great. I appreciate, appreciate you looking into that. And, you know, I think it could be a very good positive if we were able to, if we were able to do it. But not looking into it, we don't have anything. So I'm excited and I think with the Taylor Swift momentum, I think we got a good chance if, if it's, if it's at all possible, because I know she's got a lot to move around. The, let me see, the last thing, did I have anything else? I think that may, I think that's it. I think that's all that I have, so we will go to.
Could I offer one last thing? I apologize. I forgot to mention, the Board of Elections is in need of poll workers for the election on August 8th. And so anybody that's interested in working at the polls, please again, contact the Board of Elections. It's a paid position and it's doing your civic duty in many ways. So I just want to encourage people to take a look at that. Thanks.
Thank you. And because, I don't know if that's on our, is that on our by leave? Do we have a by leave about our meeting on the 8th?
We do.
Okay. I'd like to take that up at this time because we also encourage everybody to get out and vote. I know this is strange. We usually don't vote this time of year, but please share, share, share for people to get out and vote. It's a very important issue that's on there. And, you know, we've got to get people to come out and vote and be educated because it is your voice. So we will not have our session on Tuesday, the August 8th. We will allow you to get out and vote. And please, they need poll workers, if you can be a poll worker. It is a paid, it is a paid job. Please sign up to be a poll worker. Okay, so I'm going to go to our by leave advance item number. Yes, we're going to advance item number one, by leave number one. This is to allow us to have our special meeting on, on Monday, the 7th, so we don't meet on the 8th. And this will be, am I doing this right?
This is actually the by leave for the, for the tax levy hearing tonight.
Oh, okay. Okay, let's go with that first.
I, I think that's the only one that we have today.
Okay.
Yeah.
So we don't have to vote on that, but just letting people know, we won't be meeting on the 8th of August. We will be meeting on the 7th of August so that we can have people be able to go vote on the 8th. So please make your calendars adjusted to that. By leave number one is our hearing tonight on the zoo levy. So I would like to make a motion to approve item number, by leave number one.
Second.
Ms. Reese.
Yes.
Ms. Dreehouse.
Yes.
Ms. Summer Dumas.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Before we go to by leave number two, I want to mention, by leave number three has been pulled and that was a resolution to appoint a member to the Port Authority. And I just wanted to say that before when we were trying, when we appoint people, we had been asking if those people would be able to show up. And I do want to apologize because Latanya Springs was here, she's the Assistant Director of Housing Opportunities Made Equal, which is a very important organization to us. We work with them, and especially when we're dealing with affordable housing. I thought she would be great to put on there. What I have some concern with, and I would like for my colleagues to see how we want to work with this, I don't know if this could be executive session, there's been a lot of talk about have your chiefs get together. And I had expressed some concerns, I'm all for that. But if our chiefs get together and they say they talked to us and they come back and report information, because I want to clear this up, because it's been two times, I don't want my Chief of Staff to feel some kind of way. Once you've done this and you come back and say this is what it is, it's kind of disheartening that we pull something the day of or a couple of minutes before. So I wanted to find out how we want to handle that since we. So I wanted to find out how we want to handle that, since we can't talk to each other. If the chief gets something from your chief, or if someone gets something from my chief, that's what it is. So how do we want to handle that? Because not just my chief, it'd make it hard for any chief of staff if we're saying we're gonna communicate through the chiefs of staffs. So I would like to know, I wanted to apologize to anyone, I don't care who the appointee was, if they're gonna show up today and volunteer, uh, and I believe we had asked, I had transgress from the last times we've asked, can some of these people that we're appointing show up and let them know, you know, when we're appointing them? And that's what we did. Uh, but today, I just thought that was disheartening, because once the chiefs say something and they voted and they told them, and I, that's the only way that I know we could communicate. So I don't know from an attorney, are we able to do executive sessions on appointments? So we can talk directly to each other instead of?
The executive sessions there, I don't have it in front of me, but there's specific reasons you can. Um, I'll, I'll have to, I'll have to look into that and get back to you.
Can you just check on that? Because I just, today I was, I was a little disheartening, because, uh, the chiefs had met, and the agreement was, and then it was like, well, I changed my mind today. Well, that's, that's kind of hard. Why is the chiefs even meeting? I mean, we don't need to meet. So I'm trying to get from my colleagues how we want to proceed in the future.
I'll be happy to comment.
Yes, Commissioner Dumas.
My chief, uh, represents me very well, and, uh, he indicated my, um, decision of where I was going with this appointment. Um, but at the same time, the chief is not me, uh, and there's something called free will. So after further investigation and research on my part, I decided, which is free will, to change my mind on an appointment. And so I would suggest that, um, we wait until the legislation is passed before we invite someone to come in, uh, because I feel very bad about the person who decided to come in, because there was some thought, um, by the input of my chief of staff, I don't know about Commissioner Drehouse, but, um, so he reflects everything that I asked him to reflect. I don't know if we need a executive session, that'll be up to, to you two, but, um, after further investigation, um, I decided that I wanted to change my mind, and I have the right to do that, and, but I would just suggest that we, uh, have the person come in after the legislation is passed, and I think that'll solve, uh, everything. And, um, I think they're doing a good, a great job, the chiefs of staff, and as I was saying, my chief of staff was contacted earlier this morning, uh, to find out if I was still with the same thought, and he said yes. Um, well, unfortunately, he's on vacation, and I didn't want to call him and disturb his, uh, vacation and let him know that after further research, I wanted to change my mind. So that's why. So he was right, 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 uh, and then I, uh, and I wasn't wrong, but I just decided to make a better choice. And lastly, for me, um, I'd like the young lady to know, or whoever's listening, that we have lots of positions left on the boards and commissions, a lot of them that relate to, um, housing and things like that. So I, I feel very confident, um, that she or he, um, can find another position, and I certainly would, um, support, because I remember looking at both resumes, um, even though that particular resume came in after, uh, the one that I thought might be a better match. But there are plenty of positions, and I apologize myself if you came in and thought you were going to be appointed. We certainly, I certainly still want you to be part of our board.
Yeah, I just want to say that it wasn't like they thought they were gonna be appointed. We have a, we have a calendar, and it usually goes out, and the calendar had the resolution on it, so a person could see their name when they look at the calendar. I think the issue was, and I don't know, you know, I don't have, I know I only have one person really, a chief of staff in my office, we don't have time to really waste just to sit around and chit chat. We got a lot of other things, so if it's not the chief of staffs making these decisions when they talk to us, I understand if you will, but this person sent their resume in, it's been over a month that we've had time to review. We brought other people in, there was someone, wasn't, I guess, uh, what other person was brought in? I was interested in that person, but they, uh, that Drehouse brought in, but that person did not live in the county. Uh, this person, we have plenty of time to look at the resume, tell them we're not gonna do it, and the question was very specific, that it was gonna be on the calendar today, and where are we on that? And so I just think out of, I mean, I know we're commissioners, and that's nice, we got titles, but these other people are individuals too and should have some respect, and it was on the calendar. It wasn't like call them in, it's on the calendar. It's public record. Who is, you know, the, the resolution is public record on the calendar. So I just want to find out which way we're doing, because if your chief of staff is not, and it's not the first time, is not in, not what you're thinking, I don't know how we get to your thinking, because I know when I say something, uh, and he takes it back, that's what it is. Or Drehouse has done it, her chief of staff, that's what it is. But it's all, it's been kind of, and I don't know how you want to handle that, but we don't, I, I know I don't have time to, every five seconds, did they change their mind? Are they right? Is it, is it, you know, going to the clerk's office? And I just think now is someone else involved. No, they're not interested in applying anymore, because the process, that's what they just told me. If I apply for something else, and they change their mind in five minutes. So we are not overseers of people, we are together as, respect each other as individuals and titles, and I just thought, I could see if we had just given this, you know, this week, this has been, this, first of all, this, this position's been vacant way too long, and we've been going for over a month. So I just, I understand the free will, and that's, that's great, but I also think it needs to have some respect to the people that are applying, especially when we put it on the calendar. I could see if it wasn't on the calendar, but it was on the calendar, uh, and, you know, I, I mean, so that's where I'm, I'm going, and even if it was your person selecting or Drehouse person selecting, um, and I also don't want to have a habit, because it seems to be a habit with my office, every time we get someone on the calendar, it's like we turn our back and then they're tiptoe down to the clerk, and I change my mind, and it makes my person look bad, who's working their butts off, just like your staff is working their butts off. So we just need to come to, maybe the legal people can let us know, so we can go face to face. I heard it directly from your mouth, her mouth, my mouth, and we don't have to put our chiefs of staffs in these predicament. Otherwise, we don't need to have all these chief of staff meetings if we're not giving them the authority or whatever, the feedback, uh, of that. So I just wanted to highlight that, it's not, you, yes, you have a right to change your mind, you have, just like the lady had a right to apply or not apply, but they're a citizen too, and once they're on the calendar, it's kind of tough. I don't, you don't have to invite nobody, they look at the calendar. I'm on there, I'm gonna come. So that's, that's kind of where I'm at on it.
And, um, my, uh, chief of staff, uh, he gives the information that I asked him to give, he's very good at that. This was an anomaly to me, this doesn't happen often, and this young lady that is on the calendar, her application actually came in after another gentleman that's on there, but I had heard there might be some conflict for the gentleman who wanted this position, so I, I started researching it, and I feel good about my decision. And so, um, this, this doesn't happen all the time, and I think our process that we have now works great, uh, but it happened this time. Um, so, and as I said, I apologize to her if she's looking, if, if not, um, but just in general, we need people, if she chooses not to come back, that's fine.
Well, I got it, but I don't want this to be a habit.
It's not.
Uh, it's happened more than one occasion, not on the this, but on one occasion, on more than one occasion, and it seems to be happening with my office, and I'm saying, I want to put a stop to it.
Okay.
Whatever your decision is, your decision, but at some point, we gotta be about our word, whatever our word is, or we don't do the chief of staff. So wanted to bring that up. All right, Jeff, you have the, that's.
Can I just comment? So, so unfortunately, the process is what it is, because we cannot talk to each other about anything that we're gonna vote on, and that's most things. So, um, and, and I, I, I would be surprised if we were allowed to do this by way of executive session. I'm not an attorney, so I don't know, I think it's worth review, but we've not done it before, and I suspect we're not allowed to do it. Um, so the chiefs are the only way for us to communicate with one another, and so, um, I too have confidence that, um, that is a good vehicle for us to communicate with each other. My chief of staff, um, we communicate often about, um, you know, what's coming up, what's on the calendar, what, what's in front of us, um, and so, uh, you know, because we can't speak with each other, we really have no choice but to go through our chiefs, and so, um, you know, I, I think that's the, the way to go, uh, in the future. I mean, there are situations when there's a misunderstanding, um, but I, I too don't think it happens very often, and I don't really see any other way to get to it. So, um, I just don't want to throw my two cents in regarding the chiefs meetings, because I think they're really important. It's the only way we communicate with each other, and so I think it's really important that we continue to do that.
Thank you. I still want to look into, because we do executive sessions on other things, so just let me know.
I'll work with the administration on the details of the situation.
Thank you, because I know everybody's busy, and we just want to make sure we're making good use of time. Okay, Mr. Aludo.
Thank you, commissioners. Um, my by leave comments have already been addressed in the broader conversation, specifically about Board of Elections, uh, poll workers, um, but, uh, we've got one by leave, we've already addressed by leave number one. By leave number two, uh, is Budget Adjustment 19. Um, this is appropriating, uh, state grant funding, uh, to assist with the funding for the August special election in the amount of 1.465 million, uh, to the Board of Elections for employee overtime, uh, temporary employee compensation, uh, and elections, uh, temporary employees as well, as well as other election expenses. Uh, we also have, in the same budget adjustment, uh, we have an item that is on the agenda today, we have a contract related to the forensic information management system for the coroner's office. Uh, this, uh, budget adjustment appropriates that funding out of remaining balances, uh, remaining balance in the coroner lab construction project. So this provides the dollars for that, uh, contract to move forward. Uh, the administration recommends approval. Assistant Administrator Bergen is here, if there's any detailed questions.
Okay, I'll open it up for questions, Vice President Drehouse.
I have no questions.
Commissioner Dumas?
Um, yeah, Jeff, I was wondering why we put both of those together? Uh, is it because they're both state funding? Is that why?
Um, sometimes it works out that way, I don't think that's, uh, I think in this particular case, uh, we had the urgency of the special election funding, and we also had the fact that the, the, um, coroner's office contract was on the agenda, so I just felt it was a good time to advance that one as well.
Okay.
But the funding source, um, they, actually the funding source in the, in the coroner's lab is actually the project balance from the bond issuance. Um, so they are actually different funding sources, they just happen to coincide from a timing perspective.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Just wanted to make a comment also that, um, voting is so important to Hamilton County that we allow our staff to, uh, work at voting polls and to help during the election, and that is a payday for them to do that, because they're short, for one thing, and because it's cer- certainly important for everybody to be able to vote. So that's all I have.
Thank you. Um, I make a motion to, uh, to approve by leave two.
Second.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Drehouse?
Yes.
Commissioner Summer Dumas?
Yes.
Thank you, commissioners, no further by leaves.
Awesome. Okay. All right. Now we're going to Environmental Services now. You can skip me if you want. Nah, I'm not gonna get, let you off that easy. Engineer?
Good afternoon. Uh, just two items today. Um, item number one is resolution authorizing an amendment to a consulting agreement with AECOM for general engineering services. Um, it does show the total there is $49,000. That is the new total. We are asking for an increase of $9,000 to this agreement. Uh, this is for two projects that they're currently working on, uh, West Loveland Road Bridge and the Anderson Ferry Foley Signal Design. Um, this will allow us to complete those projects under our general engineering agreement. And item number two is a, uh, release of an easement, a permanent drainage easement and temporary construction easement that is currently at, uh, 11711 Salzman Road in Sycamore Township. The, the township conveyed these easements to Hamilton County in December of 1993 for the installation of a storm sewer. That work was never performed, and there is no storm drainage facility currently there and none intended to be constructed. So this will allow the county to release the easement, since they are no necessary, and, uh, will allow the property owner to use the property in his, his method.
All right. Any questions, Vice President?
No questions.
Commissioner Dumas?
No questions.
Okay, I make a motion to approve items one and two.
Second.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Drehouse?
Yes.
Commissioner Summer Dumas?
Thank you.
Thank you. Item number three, Environmental Services.
Michelle Balz is here. Hello. Michelle Balz with Hamilton County Resource, part of Environmental Services, and, uh, we applied for an Ohio EPA Market Development Grant on behalf of Rumke. Ohio EPA has an annual grant program where they try to encourage recycling markets in Ohio, but they require a pass-through agency, so the grant is targeted to private companies like Rumke, but they require a pass-through agency like a solid waste district. So we applied on their behalf, and we've been, uh, granted those funds. Um, it's $200,000 to help improve, uh, the PET, so the plastic, uh, the clear plastic recycling at this, uh, material recovery facility in St. Bernard. Um, just like the technology in our everyday lives, the technology in recycling, you know, continues to improve and change, and hopefully with these improvements, they will be able to, to pull even more of that valuable PET plastic out of the stream. Um, so right now, they have, um, granted, Ohio EPA has granted us $200,000 to pass through to Rumke. They require 100% match, which Rumke will match, so there will be no county dollars spent towards this project. Overall, it's over a million dollar project, they've received grant funds from the Recycling Partnership, which is a national organization as well. So I have brought Ben Pettigo, there he is, with Rumke, um, in case you have any questions about the, you know, the, the technical questions about, uh, the equipment or anything.
Okay. Vice President Drehouse?
Well, this is good news. Uh, yeah, I'm, I'm glad that we are moving forward with this, and happy that this solid waste policy committee could be part of getting the grant to come down here to Hamilton County. I would like to have just a little bit more of an explanation, um, about what exactly this is, and i- if it means anything related to the capacity down in St. Bernard.
Sure, so I will hand it over to, to Ben, but I will say, with PET recycling, it is, um, our stream, our recycling stream is changing all the time, and since the facility was built 10 years ago, um, it's certainly, there have been changes, we have less newspaper in the stream, and so, um, the, the, these type of bottles are, um, very valuable, but they're actually, because they're cylinders, they're harder for the machines to read, um, than like if you imagine a, a milk jug that has a flat surface. So, um, so they, they roll around, they get smushed, so, um, hopefully this equipment will help with that, but I will hand it over to Ben to say that better than I did.
Michelle, you were wonderful. I want to, Commissioner, Commissioner Drehouse, I want to tell you, my name is Ben Pettigo with Rumke Recycling, and this is the third, uh, uh, grant that we partnered with Hamilton County, and it is a joy to work with, uh, Michelle Balz and Mary Krogan Baker, and, uh, just, uh, a wonderful, uh, a wonderful group. Commissioner Drehouse, uh, I think Michelle said it, uh, very accurately, uh, as the stream has changed, uh, it becomes harder, especially for PET, the cylinder, uh, what we're going to do, we're going to put some redundancy and some optical sorting equipment that we currently have, we're going to, uh, reprogram those to, uh, bring residual back into the system. Uh, Commissioner Reese, the, uh, interesting fact, the, uh, facility in Hamilton County is the 10th largest recycling facility in North America. I think we have a lot to be, uh, proud of, uh, in, in that regard, Commissioner.
So this doesn't change the capacity at this facility, it just changes the, as you say, the redundancies in the process?
Correct, and, uh, we, we're confident that we can capture more material, uh, through, through this, and, and we've provided analytics through, um, through this, uh, grant that was accepted by the Ohio EPA. We believe that we can capture about 5% more material that, uh, would otherwise go into a, um, like an all-plastic type of a, uh, of a material.
Thank you. Thank you. Commissioner Dumas?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Well, this is a win-win situation, um, that we're cleaning up this crazy environment, uh, a little bit at a time, and also that we don't have to pay, Hamilton County is not paying any money to do it at this time. So thank you so much for the grant.
Yeah, very thankful. I, I would say that the Ohio EPA, what, what a great program to allow private businesses to, to apply. And again, it's a, it's an honor to partner with, with Hamilton County.
Thank you. Thanks for applying. I make a motion to approve item three.
Second.
Commissioner Reese.
Yes.
Commissioner Drehouse.
Yes.
Commissioner Summer Dumas.
Madam President, if I could just very quickly, I just wanted to note that, first of all, thank Michelle for all of her work and all the work of the Solid Waste District. But Ben and Tom from, from Rumpke have been doing this for a long time. We, back when I was with the Solid Waste District, I was working with both of them on recycling issues as well. So I guess, I was going to say, who does that age more? I guess it ages exactly the same amount, right? But just wanted to thank them. They do fantastic work in promoting the environmental improvement in the community. They're just a real resource for all of us. I just wanted to thank both of them for all their work.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you very much. All right, Mr. Aludo, we got the consent agenda.
I do, yes. So on your consent agenda, starting with item four, this is resolution approving funds for talent retention. This is our annual amount that we do so that we can do employee appreciation activities throughout the year at $30,000. We have a budget adjustment, number 17, which is item number five on your agenda. This is for mental health and recovery services. We also have the Sheriff State Marine Patrol Grant. We have the EMA, Emergency Management Agency, some transfer from non-personnel to personnel. And we have an appropriation, just reconciling and appropriating the amount for the full property tax rebate this year that the board had passed in 2022. Item number six is a resolution adopting the tax budget at $1.2 billion. This is one that I always spend just a second on, because just for folks who are watching, this is not the board approving the budget. The Ohio Revised Code requires that county, that all political subdivisions approve a tax budget estimating their revenues and expenses for the upcoming year. Primarily what this does is just shows the budget commission in the county that there is in fact a plan to spend tax revenues generated at the county level this year. So, but it is really a formulaic calculation. So that is item number six. Item number seven is an agreement, is our annual agreement with the Ohio Kentucky Indiana Regional Council of Government, governments, where they do perform services for us such as transportation planning services, air quality planning services, water management services. This is our annual contract with them. It's paid from multiple funds within the county at $272,000. We have the engineers bid for road salt to Morton, Morton Salt at $410,500. We have two by leave items. First is a contract, Job and Family Services with Great Oaks Career Campuses at $7,738. This is for nursing assistance programs and also nursing assistance programs for SNAP consumers. We also have a then and now, item number 10. This is a, to authorize the execution of another then and now. This is for med certs for employment and training services as well. We have the purchase of a Chevrolet Workhorse Step Van through the county engineer at $4,000. We have the, we had previously discussed this item. This is the award of an ITB for the coroner's office. This funds their forensic information management system. We discussed that in our, in the, in the budget adjustment that we had just done. There is a rejection of a bid out at the Juvenile Youth Center for their roof and masonry repairs. It came in over 10%, so we'll be coming back to the board as we will be rebidding that. We have two conduit revenue, healthcare revenue bonds. The first is with, for Twin Towers and Twin Lakes. This is with life enriching communities. This is a reef, this is a healthcare revenue bond, conduit bond issuance. We also have a refunding issuance through, for Children's Hospital Medical Center. Then we have several items for Job and Family Services. We have an agreement with Napier Trucking for driver training for SNAP consumers. We have an agreement with Talbert House for the Comprehensive Case Management and Employment Program at $4.7 million. We have an agreement with Hern House for Independent Living Services, $250,000. An amendment of an agreement with Choices Inc. for Independent Living Services at $400,000. An agreement with Lighthouse Youth Services for Residential Treatment Services at $121,000. We have an agreement with Desert Lily, and for Desert Lily Nevada with Rights of Passage for $100,000. This is for their Nevada facility. We have an agreement with Care Youth Corporation for Residential Treatment Services, $160,000. We have an agreement with United Methodist Children's Home for Foster Care Services for $69,534. And then we have an agreement with Planning and Development. This is an agreement approving and authorizing a home project with the Habitat for Humanity. This is $350,000 grant the board had received an update on previously. This relates to six units in Lachlan, West College Hill, and Springfield Township. Then we have item number 25, the report of no objection of two liquor permits by the sheriff, and the request and authorization to travel at the county's expense, three employees to Dublin, Ohio from the county engineer's office. And that would complete the by leaves, commissioners. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. I'll open it up, Vice President Drehouse.
Yeah, just one thing. I wanted to highlight on the budget adjustment, item number five, we are now seeing the treatment, prevention, recovery services dollars go out from One Ohio. This is the direct allocation, it is not the foundation line, but this is good news. We have tried to get this money down to the, the ground as quickly as possible, and so I'm glad to see that the money is finally hitting the ground, hitting the providers that are providing the services. So I'm glad to see that in item number five. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Dumas?
Just one comment as it relates to JFS, just great to see the continuation of the services that are necessary for our young people to, to get the treatment that they need. That's all I have.
I think I already have that answered. Okay. I'll make a motion to approve items four through, let's see, four through 26 to approve and accept for the record.
Second.
Commissioner Reese.
Yes.
Commissioner Drehouse.
Yes.
Commissioner Summer Dumas.
Yes.
I make a, oh, anything else?
Nothing further.
Nothing further? Okay. Nothing further, I make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Commissioner Reese.
Yes.
Commissioner Drehouse.
Yes.
Commissioner Summer Dumas.
Yes.